Good evening, everybody. Call our meeting to order and please join us with a pledge of allegiance. Erin, would you please call the board?
Councilmember Obrang.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Dittrich.
Here.
Councilmember Weiner.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. Um, are there any changes to the agenda tonight or anything that we need to amend?
I have no changes.
Well, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'm looking for the agenda that was presented.
I'll second that. Okay, any further discussion? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Next, it's a public input period. Please come to the podium and before you state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments, individual remarks are limited to five minutes, but the overall public input period is at thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to speak to the council tonight? Hearing none, I'll close the public input period and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Our first item tonight is I need a motion to approve the minutes from the July twenty eighth meeting and the August fourth committee as a whole. I need a motion to adopt Resolution seventy approving the bills and expense report. Next, I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the city reports and minutes, which is the July twenty first Park and Rec Commission meeting and the July twenty twenty five wastewater report. I need a motion to approve the liquor license. It's a renewal for off-premise Class B alcohol license with start score number seven ninety at Thousand West Main Street. Next, I need a motion to approve some downtown incentive grants as recommended by the design committee.
And I apologize, I did not realize I hadn't updated that after the meeting. So in the agenda packet now, it tells you there's a facade grant for the south facade and the amount of seventy-five-hundred-four. And facade grant for the east facade in the amount of seventy-five-hundred-four, the one hundred North Franklin Building, which is the old New U building.
Mm-hmm.
Is it, is this right? And then the building right next to it, the Lori French Travel Building, they're recommended approval of a seventy-five-hundred-dollar facade grant and then an ongoing grant in the amount. It won't exceed that one thousand fifty.
Okay.
So I apologize for not having that up there sooner.
Okay, any questions? Okay, next, I need a motion to approve Resolution or to adopt Resolution seventy-one and that will accept the dedication of the Commerce Court Street Right-of-Way Lot C of the Southwest Industrial Park Fifth Subdivision, which serves as the regional stormwater detention basin for the subdivision. And I need a motion to approve the payment to Burrington Group for payment in the amount of forty-nine-hundred dollars for the Grand Avenue Trail extension project. I need a motion to approve the payment to Fergram for invoices in the amount of twenty-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and they are for the twenty-twenty-six Anderson Street Improvement, Fieldwork Design Services Utility Coordination and Easement Services and the Downtown Stormwater Study. Need a motion to approve a payment to Metrics Architecture for payment under the Bon Park Shelter Project in the amount of seventy-eight-fifty-five-seventy-five. I need a motion to approve. The city staff has some unpaid bills for that need to be certified with the Delaware County Treasurer and it's a collection on property taxes. And I think you have a list of all those properties. And then a motion to approve a bid from Northway Well and Pump Company in the amount of ninety-three-eighty-four-twenty for pump replacement at Fairview Live Station. I'll take an emotion and a second and then we can open up for discussion.
I make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
And is there any discussion or questions?
Got a question, Jim. Three point six on the Commerce Court Street Right-of-Way Storm Detention Basin. Are they going to maintain cutting the grass, keeping the weeds out?
No, we'll dig over the ownership maintenance of that basin, stormwater basin. We'll cut it three times a year with that way more, just kind of like what we do with the railway ditches.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yep.
All right. Um, next, we're going to move on to our regular agenda items. First one is, um, we need a motion to award the contract for the fire station parking lot project at Eastern Iowa Escavating and Concreet at a bid price of fifty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty dollars and fifty cents. Um, do you want Randy to speak to this or you can speak to it?
Randy.
Okay, if you have any information you might share with us, yeah, you can come on up here.
So we took the, we took bids for paving the park lot north of the, north of the fire station and we got five of them back. They're all pretty competitive with each other and like noted in the agenda, uh, Eastern Iowa was lower than fifty-nine thousand. So it's fifty-nine thousand, sixty-seven, three-hundred, seventy-two thousand, two-hundred, seventy-six thousand, seven, and chip drive was ninety-one thousand, a little over ninety-one thousand, so. All in all, pretty.
Yeah.
Pretty good bid.
Fact that you got five.
We got five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions for the chief?
We did budget seventy-five thousand dollars this year for paving that park lot.
Uh, when will it start?
Kind of left it up to the contractor. I know he's always been kind of been looking for work, so it sounds like when he called, when he called me or Jason and, um, he's like, it's kind of, it's almost kind of a building project for them.
Okay.
I was gonna say probably drop, do, leave.
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they really wanted to get it done, they could probably get it done.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's nothing too major.
It'll happen yet this fall.
It'll happen yet this fall.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Thanks, Randy. All right, with that, I entertain a motion in a second.
I make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
Any other questions? Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
Okay, next. Um, I need a, um, motion to approve Resolution seventy-two. It's approving the engineering agreement with Kirk and Michael and Associates for the West Marion Street Bridge project. Speak to that, Tim?
Yeah, as we discussed at the community hall meeting last week, uh, we did receive five engineer proposals for the West Marion Street Bridge. Five or four? Four, four, okay. We had a scoring committee to review the proposals. Uh, first, the team that came out with the score was Kirk and Michael, uh, reviewed their proposal and now asking for the, uh, contract with that. Anthony Barjet with Kirk and Michael is here tonight. If you'd like to ask him any questions for ready to proposal or projects.
Okay. How are you?
Good.
Good, good.
So.
Okay, we had a committee of, was it?
Four.
Four, yeah, that helps make the decision, so thank them for doing that.
Yeah, then you got anything you want to talk about, your new role as Kirk and Michael.
Yeah, first, first reason it would be selected for this, this, uh, this job. Um, so, you know, we're really excited about tackling this. Um, I guess, you know, our, our schedule is, is, is pretty open through this, this winter fall, fall winter and, you know, to start, start, uh, you know, take a look at this and get going. You know, we understand that the construction year is a little, we're always out there, so we've got some time to kind of plan this out and really work with, um, Tim and staff and the council on this, so.
Yeah, biggest challenge we have with, with this project, this is going to coincide with the downtown reconstruction project down on the streets. So we're really having two different firms, two different contractors, because there'll be a different contractor doing the bridge than there will be for downtown street projects. And so coordinating the work that needs to be done, the detour routes, planning for any emergency detours that we may have because of West Marion Street Bridge is out of commission and that downtown is under construction. You have no access through there, so that is our detour route with West Main Street. Uh, goes under water or in flood event. So we have a lot of things we need to coordinate and that's where we're going to rely on the two engineering firms to help us plan things out. We got some time to do it and we need to get taken care of.
Will there, will there be a general like working between the two?
I'm going to coordinate between the two. I'm, yeah, I'm the project manager between the two firms and the projects are going on. Barry or whoever at the time will be doing our project inspection of the street portion of that. However, because it's a federal project with the bridge, uh, Kirk and Michael and, um, Burden Group is a partner with them on this project, so. So we've got some work ahead of us, but we've got some time to make sure we think of everything and we'll have a couple more meetings with, uh, in the businesses downtown as we're getting towards that project.
Yeah. I really felt that Kirk and Michael had a good presentation, um, what they said to us. It really gave me the feeling that you have a good hold on what's going to happen, what we need to do and also that you were willing to work with another firm on Main Street. So I really appreciated that fact that, that I could see how willing you were to, to do the job we need to have done, so thank you.
Thank you, yeah, we really feel like this is a big team effort, you know, not only with, um, with Bernie Barupa to, you know, working with Fergram on their, their, their downtown project as well. So, yeah, we all, we all want to see this succeed and, you know, come out, come out well for the city, so.
Any other questions, Randy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Eddie. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion in a second to, um, approve the engineering agreement.
I need to adopt Resolution seventy-two.
All right, we'll second it.
Last time for questions or comments. Okay, Linda? Still?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Bill? Brian, sorry, I apologize. There's lots of Bs. Okay, um, next here. Um, the next one we have, I need to approve the quote in the amount of seventy-three-eighty-five for the Civic Plus for agenda and meeting management software for our replaced board docs, correct?
That is correct, so what has happened as we talked about again, at the, you know, board docs was bought out by diligent, uh, community, diligent community is now ending, uh, board docs. And so everyone has to transition to diligent community or you find another software program. Uh, so we did take this time to go out and evaluate different programs that are available for agenda management for us that also allows us to assist to our minutes. And so we got two proposals back, one from Civic Plus and one from diligent, um, communities. There are always a little bit of difference, so for board docs, we were averaging twenty-eight-hundred dollars a year for our subscription. Nice, easy to package, uh, but it was only working for one group. We could not use that for multiple councils or boards and commissions unless we upgraded to the, the higher priced unit. Well, now we're looking at this. Um, if we want multiple committees to be able to use agenda software under diligent communities at six thousand dollars a year. Under Civic Plus, we're able to do it for about forty-two-hundred dollars a year. But we do have to do the implementation phase where they bring stuff over, so that's the reason the first year is higher price under Civic Plus as opposed to board docs. But in order, over the years, Civic does, we, over the years, Civic Plus will be cheaper.
And what was the, what was the additional cost of the original one if we want to have more than one group together?
On, on board docs, we would have to go to that six thousand dollars.
Six thousand, so realistically, we're going to be saving a lot.
More saving.
I would have first year.
Right.
First year.
Right.
Yep. And then the other option is Civic Plus does provide more services to governments. So we're going to be looking at our website. Uh, our subscription or contract with SOX expires in another year. We may look at transitioning our website over to Civic Plus for them to manage.
Yeah, there's cost savings and a benefit to doing so, then they bring that forward to, um, get everything under one umbrella.
One umbrella.
A lot of times when you lump services together, sometimes there is a little bit of.
But that uses some flexibility options for us to look at and evaluate.
And so no other questions, I entertain a motion by the council.
I'm looking to approve the quote from Civic.
I'll second it.
Last opportunity for questions or comments. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
All right, next, we need a motion to approve proposal from Access Systems to migrate the City Hall server from a physical server to a cloud at a cost of ten-thousand-six-hundred-eighty dollars and eighty cents. I believe you guys discussed this.
Yeah, a little bit, so our server, we talked about this at the budget, work session, business budget. Physical server itself is expiring, you know, it's time for us to transition. If we were to replace a server with a physical server, the budget amount is about twenty-five thousand dollars. So going online is, or cloud-based is cheaper for us. Uh, we've got price update, you know, again, Microsoft has changed how their subscriptions are for Office three sixty-five. Uh, they're going away from where you purchased the software you saw on your computer. Everything is an annual premium fee based. So all this stuff is changing, that's the reason you're going to see that cost for a monthly subscription cost going up, um, to six-hundred-and-sixty dollars a month based on the number of accounts we have and the premium service or basic service. But because we are eliminating, uh, we have a data backup service and some of the other stuff, we're able to save some, see some actual savings. So staff is recommending we transition to the front service, server basis. And it's budgeted, we've budgeted eleven-thousand-five-hundred-twelve dollars for this project. It's coming in at ten thousand, well over ten thousand.
Yeah, the, the nice thing about the cloud is this, um, the one benefit is all the, the data that, that is all always upgraded. So you're always running on the precious, precious stuff, which is a plus. It does really bite if you get a monthly, you can buy a license, but, you know, that's the way of the future now. Everything I do is that way too.
Yeah.
Business.
And if there were to be.
Nice.
Yeah, and if we were to have, you know, a storm or a fire or anything, it's there.
It's a cloud, we're going to be up and running.
So do they recommend, I mean, do they charge you after you get to a certain size of data though? Do they charge you a monthly fee for the data?
They can't, we're not to that point yet.
You're not to that point yet.
Question, who owns the cloud? Is this Microsoft that owns the server you're going to?
No, Access Systems hasn't set up with who they're.
You don't have to have a business to.
Yeah.
Just be nice to know who actually owns the server, whether it's ABS or ABWS or whatever it is. Right.
Yeah.
Just curious.
I do the business associate thing for hip of things too.
Yeah.
It's like SharePoint or something it was called, I thought that would be a Microsoft product.
Yeah, that's one I've tried.
Not that you wouldn't do it, I'm just curious, it'd be nice to have in your records just to know where that is.
And then do you have, do they recommend still for you, I know because we're getting ready to kind of switch to that at my end, a backup for in case your internet or something goes down?
Absolutely.
So, because are you fiber in here right now, I'm trying to remember?
We, we have fiber, both.
Both.
We have a redundant one.
Lucky you have redundant, see one. Okay.
Yeah, SharePoint and this is.
I thought that was a Microsoft product.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions on this? Did Tim or Erin? Would the council like to report?
Yes, I'll make a motion to recommend approving for Access Systems proposal for the physical cloud migration.
I'll second it.
Saying that right?
Yeah, sure, you are. I know, I'll make it sound. Okay.
Physical server is about sort of basis migration.
That's what I said.
I misunderstood. I know it's been bad.
That's exactly what he said.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
All right. Uh, let's see here, I need a, oops. This just did something funky, all right. Um, I need a motion, or we had a request for a special exemption to livestock restrictions from Lisa White and Carol Williams White for the property at five twelve Marion Street. I believe they want to get some chickens.
Good.
Maybe they can opportunity to see that.
No.
Well, the, it's, because I can have sense, right?
Correct, well, the council permit, authorizes a permit, so, correct.
Correct.
Up to six and a half years.
I would just kind of open to kind of see maybe a picture or something of what they're trying to say. I mean, she's got a description on the page here, but, um, sometimes picture evidence helps.
I would also like to know neighbors.
She, because she stopped in. When she stopped in, she told me she had talked to the neighbors and two of them did not have any issues. One was a tenant that was moving out, so. Uh, it is on the corner lot, large yard, it's fenced in and that way.
Well, I'm kind of like Joe and Mary Ann, I guess I'm not against it. She could draw us some sort of map drawing of what she wants to do, not say we're a refuser, but see if we could ask her for some sort and try to get something in writing from the neighbors.
Okay.
That's my dream.
I agree, because I just don't feel like there's enough information. Am I against it? No.
No, that's it, and a bunch of people that I've been, there's have all give us a map and says, okay, I'm fourteen feet away from the fence, I'm twelve feet away from this place.
And neighbors.
Because they can't be within, so many feet of the property line and home of some sort, isn't that?
Well, the council has weighed that, minimized that in the past with some of the, the runs because some of the smaller lots in town, you can't meet those requirements.
But then you know that, that.
They, they start, they're neighbors, they.
Right now, well.
Have they provided you something in writing saying, hey, would you not object to it?
That would be the only thing to, yeah, if the neighbors are in writing that the neighbor you're applying with it. Um, have them sign everything, isn't really good enough, I don't.
The only thing that gets me kind of unease, easy, I guess, about that scenario is your neighbors. I, I mean, some of us got great neighbors, neighbors, some of us not so much. So if, if the neighbor says no, I'd hate to see the chickens not go because of, if it's not a legitimate reason for them to not have it. That's the only thing that makes me nervous. I, I do want the neighbors to agree, but I also do realize that some of us don't have nice neighbors, so.
Maybe we should table this till the next meeting.
We can do that.
And just ask them over five more in for me. And that.
We can do that, that's my problem.
Um, can we, in the future, can we make it mandatory that in order for it to be even submitted to the council packet that we need these few things?
Absolutely.
Just to make it easier, because I don't think anybody up here, I'll speak for myself, but I, I'm not opposed to it at all. It's just, what is it going to look like? Is it?
It has to be commerced.
Right.
Exactly, because being a nice neighbor is checking with your neighbor.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, so we're going to table that, I don't need a motion for the table, do I? No.
You have no action taken, we're good.
Just, okay, all right.
We'll just have it on the next agenda, uh, when we get the information.
I'm sure, we, Carol, I'll get that for us. Okay, all right, next, uh, news and property updates, do you want to speak to this?
We have a few things here, uh, there was a property at, on Gay Street, one twenty-nine Gay Street. Uh, it's been cleaned up, uh, but we ended up still getting our judgment for seven fifty, our civil penalties, as we said we're going to now, because we had to go through this. Uh, there's an abandoned lot that we've talked about on Gay Street that has no building on it. In order to go after that, we have to publish notice, which publication was done. And once that will be able to start assessing penalties on that property.
Okay.
Uh, we have one abandoned house property uh, that we filed in July, uh, notices have been sent, we're slowly, that's on Madison Street, and we're slowly getting the returns to service on that.
The two of the properties we're talking about are all set on our taxing. It's a little bit, mine is still, so we're, we're dealing with that. Um, I know Tim has been out, uh, one property on Lord Franklin, uh, regarding getting the signing or painting done. So he is sending a letter, Jim, just so you're aware, they've got until the end of the month. It completed, or else I think we go after it with the business banking. They, they did, they put steel on the roof, but they had not done anything with the siding and that was still something we gave just extra time in the painting because they asked for it, but there has been no action taken or, uh, all summer.
All right, any other questions for Jim?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Jim. All right, let's go first, Sam, Regina.
I can do quick.
Rock paper scissors.
Uh, it looks like available.
Yeah.
I know.
We're just currently working on the check, which is the next milestone for the trail plans that we're working on. Um, other than that, I think anything, that's the only thing we're working directly for the city on right now at the moment. Any questions from anybody?
Okay. Great, thank you, James.
Um, Chad, Anderson Street, working on easements, we're going to get them all kind of put together, we're going to send out the property owners. Um, so you know, Wyatt submitted their plans last week, it looked like those came through for their permit. Downtown stormwater study. Uh, so looked at things, looked at conveyance, so we've got, kind of looked at the ten-year event, which ten percent chance of occurring in a given year, but with that, it's basically putting us at thirty-six inch pipe going south of Butler at Madison, so that's just kind of get an idea of the magnitude that we're currently at with that. We're going to try to look to see, okay, a twenty-five year event, what would it take? But, um, you know, obviously the pipe's getting a lot larger, costs go up exponentially, but that's kind of where we're at, looking at, you know, ten, ten, ten-year event, thirty-six inch pipe coming, you know, just south of Butler. And then Ryan met last week with Chad and Tim about possible wetlands projects and stuff last Friday. Um, I'm looking on the northeast part of town, so they just kind of had some discussions and meetings, meeting with that last week, but that's pretty much all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Uh, just real quick, Anderson Street?
Yep.
You had to talk with, uh, Alliance, much like you've been doing on East Main, which looks wonderful now. And then think about, is that overhead on the top or which way does that run? Are they going to go underground?
So Alliance is going to go underground and actually a lot of their, it's mainly crossing, so they're going to be crossing at Beatt, Butler and Howard, and then they're actually going, their main line is going to go up Iowa Street. So they'll be doing work down not only Anderson Street, but kind of doing some work down Beatt, Butler, Howard and then also doing some work down Iowa and maybe I think Union Street.
Okay.
Um, so it's going to be more work than just, you know, Anderson Street, which, I mean, in the past, like East Main, they went a little bit beyond, but for the most part, their main lines run right down East Main, that's where the, where the work was, but be a little different with, with Anderson Street. Some of the other utilities are still kind of looking at other options. I think it was, it was Windstream, they look at going joint trench with Alliance, um, just because the right of way isn't there and there's not a whole lot of room. MediaCom haven't seen anything yet, I know they, they were considering, I think, staying aerial, but, you know, let them know if you stay aerial, you gotta, you know, you'll have to put up your own poles. You know, we did encourage them, like the city highly encourages you to go underground, I mean, they can't make it, it's, there's nothing, city ordinance or code that says they can't, you know, be aerial, but trying to get everything underground as much as possible, because yeah, like say you drive out on East Main and it's a nice clean look, they're not looking, they're not overhead.
Tree limbs can't go, which is nice.
So now that when you grow a tree in the easement, you don't have to bunch it down in the center. You power line, you do it.
Just hope the rats don't get it.
Yeah. No, Jason, I actually heard from Jason, he was, last week he ditested those, where those five condos are across from Bon Park, so the north three all have their sewer service tied together, come out the Anderson Street and then the south two come out Butler, so. Um, likely, I mean, the way I have it, well, when we get the assessment, we can talk about that more, but likely those three will be splitting that sewer service, you know, between the three of them. We'll just get it, get it sidewalk. Um, obviously Ryan owns the one mill and talked about it briefly, but I don't even know, you know, to get it, to get it, and even if the owner wanted to try to get it, their own standalone sewer service out, it would probably be somewhere, you know, in their crawl space and then try to get it more out, so. But we can have that discussion too once we have, when we do have that public meeting later here this fall.
Any further question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Do you have anything else for us tonight, Jim?
Yes.
Nothing else, okay, how about you, Tim?
Yeah, uh, so Thursday I have a legislative policy committee meeting with the other cities in Des Moines, Thursday morning. Thursday afternoon I'll be back here for paying zoning commission meeting, we have quite a few items on, on the agenda. Thursday afternoon, I'll be back here for paying zoning commission meeting, we have quite a few items on, on the agenda for P and Z. Farmers and Savings Bank is looking to build a branch out, branch office, branch bank, uh, in the AT Speedo subdivision, out there by Highway thirteen and twenty, so we'll have site plan review on that. P and Z is also going to discuss accessory building units, uh, trying to work our way through everything that went into law, and how that impacts our current ordinances. We're also going to be discussing shipping container ordinances as well, uh, so we have a lot of stuff going on through P and Z, so we'll have a lengthy meeting. Other than that, the airport committee, committee met. We have a bequest or a donation to the airport, so they are looking at building a covered shelter, attaching it to the welcome center to the east, so a roof line, we'll build a patio out there, so people can. Sit out there and watch planes come in and out, have a place for picnic, um, just kind of another feature to the welcome center for transient pilots as they come through. Uh, so that should all be covered by the donation and, and labor.
Where that donation came from, thank you.
I have the names, but I've not been able to pronounce it perfectly, so I'm not going to say it.
Anything else, Tim?
Oh, yes, thank you, Aaron, uh, so next Monday night is the meeting for easement, next Tuesday night is when we have the open house. Uh, for landlords to come in and ask questions regarding your ordinance, uh, with bedbugs, so we'll go through that, uh, next Tuesday night, uh, Jim Shaw had stopped in. He recommended we reach out to Terminex about having them come in and talk about different processes, because. Uh, he, as he understands, there was some miscommunication on the heat treatment, it doesn't damage their wiring accordingly. But same token, I have a little concern if I have Terminex come in.
Right, without having somebody else.
Yeah, and so I'm not sure how to do that without, you know, that looking like a pandering opportunity for them, so I think we'll just leave it open, but advise the landlords to take a look at different options, because there are different options out there. We just aren't recommending or requiring the way or the other.
What time was that meeting?
Uh, that is.
Five to six.
Seven to six.
That's probably going to sit there, I'm sure.
Which is.
And Chris will just shop in the hospital hall, so. Anything else, Tim?
No.
All right. Did you know anything, Aaron?
No.
Okay. Chief?
All right.
Nothing to say about it, okay. Uh, Brian?
I have nothing.
Linda?
I have anything tonight.
Mary Ann?
No.
Joe?
No.
Bill?
No, let me see.
Well, um, I, I wasn't able to be here, but I want to congratulate RMC on a really nice event on Thursday night, I. Mike Ryan was really nice and sent me videos as it was going on, so I could see the music and so forth, it was packed, so. I'm glad they came out to celebrate, so that's awesome. Um, I don't have anything else, um, at five thirty three, I'll take a motion for Linda, a second for Mary Ann, we're adjourned and we are adjourned, thank you for.